Welcome to the podcast Empowering People, a show dedicated to helping folks find their path to success. Sponsored by Hypnosis Works LLC and Realt MD, your hosts Dave Membrila and Martha Dabdo. Take it away folks. Welcome to another episode of Empowering People. The whole purpose of this podcast is to hopefully inspire people to greatness, whatever you may define as greatness. Whether it's seeking that new job, whether it's trying to get, buy a house, clean up your credit, whether it's just trying to get your act together, maybe losing five, 10 pounds, whatever you define as greatness, that's what we want to help you get there. And we're going to start off a little bit different today. We've been getting some comments and again, we encourage you to find us on Facebook, Martha and/or I. Let me know if you want to friend me and I do not know you, please send me a private message telling me why you want to friend me. Because otherwise, if I don't know you, I think it's a scam. I think it's a fake profile. So let me know upfront that hey, David, I don't know you, but I've seen your podcast and like to be your friend. I think, I'm pretty sure, because these are public podcasts, that you can message me anyway. So if you have a question for us, for either Martha or I.
Martha Dabdo.
Martha Dabdo or Dave Membrila, we are your hosts for Empowering People. I should have done that at the beginning. I'm Dave Membrila with Hypnosis Works LLC as well as Realt MD. I am embarking on a new career with Martha Dabdo, who is our Realtor brokerage. She's starting her own company and I love that idea, so I joined her. So send us a question. If you want a question related to real estate, you can ask either one of us or hypnosis, either one of us, or just a question, a problem that you're having that you'd like a solution to. So I received this, this question and I'm picking and choosing the questions. And this is one I selected for today. Says for Dave and Martha, "Thank you for adding me to Empowering People. I've seen your podcasts and find them interesting. What advice can you give to someone who feels like they're getting beat up at work, beat up at home, and just beat up generally by life? I'm not necessarily depressed, but more distraught and I'm stuck paying bills, paying rent, raising kids, and trying to survive a stale relationship, nothing's getting better. What's your advice?" So this was a tough one and I went ahead and wrote everything down. This is how I responded and of course, I'm never going to give a name, so I won't do that. So if you feel comfortable about sending us something, you know that you will not be exposed. That's a tough one, I said, since so many things are happening all at once. By getting beat up, I hope you're meaning not physically, but let's address that first. If you're ever a victim of violence, whether domestic or simply getting bullied at work, there are things you can do. Number one, a restraining order or an order of protection is one option. If it's at work, you could take it up with your boss unless of course, he's the one being a bully. If that's the case, you can file a grievance with your HR department. If it's a sexual harassment issue, that's a entirely different thing. I think there are some legal actions you can take because there are laws that protect you as a victim. As far as the responsibility of life, paying bills, rent, raising kids, so forth, take one headache, one at a time. If you're sick of your job, seek employment elsewhere. Find a job that may either pay a little more or maybe a little bit more flexible with the schedule. Maybe find a side gig, Uber, Lyft. And although you may say, yeah, but you need a new car for Lyft, a lot of people say, because they do, they get newer cars to be able to go pick folks up. I think that's a company policy. There are other ways and other forms of delivery. I had a friend of mine that was doing Uber Eats and nobody saw his car, so it didn't really matter what his car was. And he also did a delivery where he was picking up groceries for folks, some of the elderly community, and getting paid that way. My mom, back in the day, used to sell tamales, tortillas. Her and her lady friends would get together and make crocheted out items, macrame and have little fairs. She even sold Avon back in the day to make ends meet. Now, you know, granted, back then dad was working, mom was at home and she was able to do this, we were all at school. But there's things that can be done. Many times she would gather some of the neighborhood ladies around, like I said, to make the tortillas and make the tamales. And they would split, split it all, except everything but the, but the Avon they would do. Another option is to slowly get back in school, college or a trade school, maybe barber school or a plumbing trade. It'll take some sacrifice, but you can make work. It's never too late to try to upgrade your situation. In some cases, you may, you can apply for financial assistance to help pay for the training. But remember, a degree or certification is attainable, even late in life. Our friend, our personal friend, Trish Martinez, recently gained her nursing degree in her 50s. She just went, decided she was going to go back to school and, and did something she always wanted to do. She didn't hesitate, she finished it. Another personal friend of mine is Stella Rodriguez, recently earned a degree from ASU and she's also in her early 50s. There's a ton of other success stories from folks approaching the twilight years, so it can be done. As far as your relationship with a better half, or in some cases, not so much a better half, there's counseling available. However, if your partner is not willing to fix things, there may be another decision you may have to make. And again, change is not easy. But more importantly, whether at home or work, nobody, nobody should make you feel less than. As you tackle each situation, you'll find the burden and stress slowly being lifted from your shoulders, but understand it's going to take some time, maybe even a long time. Don't give up, especially if you don't have other options. Because either you fix a situation and enjoy life, or you don't and remain in that rut. So this is a simple version of, because we have had a lot of, a few going banter's back and forth between me and the person who asked this question, but this is the gist of what I answered. Martha, is there anything you'd like to add?
Dave, you hit it right on the spot. I think you start off with the communication and trying to analyze what you want to work on and tackle it one by one.
Okay, great. With that folks, we're going to take a brief pause for the cause. We'll be back with our first guest in about 30, 40 seconds.
Hey Dave, where did you get this jalopy? No AC, my makeup is melting.
It's got AC, watch, roll down the windows and I'll go faster.
You don't have to take such drastic measures when buying a home. At Realt MD, we can show you how to live comfortably while saving to buy a home. Call us now.
Well, I'm sweating my decka.
You ain't called yet?
Welcome back to Empowering People once again. Martha, this is your guest and we appreciate her coming. Take it away.
Oh my gosh, I am so excited. I am going to introduce Adelita Grijalva, an empowering woman in our community, who has served 20 years on the TUSD Board, has been the first Latina elected, the first Latina to serve on the Pima County Board of Supervisor. Welcome, Adelita.
Thank you so much, it's nice to be here.
Oh my God, it's so awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome mucho, mucho. So let's go back to the nitty gritty. Now, everybody knows Adelita, if you don't know yet, she's the daughter of Raúl Grijalva. And what I remember more, most about Raúl is growing up as a kid and watching him beat the bushes as a politician to get information out there, whether it was a political rally or for something he was doing. He'd walk in the neighborhoods, passing out flyers. How did you start, I mean, let's go back to dig to, you lived in the Wakefield area, correct?
Yes, yeah, we still have that house. That's going to be my little retirement gig right there, that little house, I'm going to live there, I love it.
Is it right across, where is that?
It's literally across the street from Wakefield and I see it every day because both my boys, well, my, my son just promoted, but they both were at Wakefield last year. It was really great to like, watch your kids walk into the school that you went to. It's just like, have those moments, you're like, please don't cry, don't tear up in front of everybody, but it's exciting, I love it.
Were you Mission View and then Wakefield?
No, I was Hollinger.
Hollinger, okay.
And then my dad was on the governing board for TUSD and then I went to, they started the first dual language program. And my dad, to prove that it was a good program, pulled us, me and my sister, out of Hollinger. And then we went to Roberts for two years in a dual language, multi-age, multi-grade group. And then because it was just transportation wasn't available and, you know, the custodian was closing up and we were still there. Like, I think we, my mom's like, I think we need to bring them back home. So I finished out at Hollinger, but Hollinger then was to grade six. So then I moved to Wakefield and then to Pueblo. We stayed right in our little feeder pattern.
Pueblo High School, huh? Do you feel, do you feel good, Dave?
That's wild, my class is 77, your class is 89. Were you involved in student council and politics even at the high school level?
I ran for president my freshman year at Pueblo and lost, like really bad, to Danny Zamorano, if you're listening.
Danny Zamorano, shout out Danny.
I know, totally lost to him. Yeah, and then I didn't want to run again. I did student council stuff, but like behind the scenes. And then I really got involved, my dad, when I graduated from high school, he's kind of famous for these little drawings and he did a little doodle that said, "Adelita Grijalva for TUSD." I'm like, I'm, I'm just turning 18, I didn't want any kind of pressure. I hadn't committed to anything other than finishing high school, going to go to college, and I didn't feel like I had enough to contribute. But being exposed to campaign since I was a baby, like we, there were marches, there were, I was in stroller, door to door, my dad and my mom would take us all the time.
Was there a special moment that you lived through your, through, through your eyes, through your dad's successes, where the moment came and said, this is the direction that I want to take?
I wish, I wish it was that easy, because it really didn't happen that way for me. I started working at a juvenile diversion program called Teen Court. And part of my job was to open up teen courts in every school. So go to every school and say, instead of suspending these kids, let's do something different. And when, when I did that, I was going to schools and most of them were just waiting for the kids to do something bad enough to get thrown out of school. There weren't any alternative programs and that was the catalyst for me. So wait a minute, so you know these, you know, these two girls are going to fight. They've been telling you, you know that there's going to be a problem. You just wait until they fight and then suspend them? So that was for me, why I ran for school board.
The turning point, so where, what school did you start off? Did you, did you start off the diversion program?
Oh yeah, we started diversion programs, we started, Sunnyside, we were actually, it was a lot easier to implement. I'm, I'm not really sure why, we did it at Wakefield, we were at town, all of the middle schools really, we just kept trying to like introduce the idea.
So going back from the doodling that your dad did, right? To envision where Adelita Grijalva's future was going to be. From that age, what year did you start at the, on the Tucson?
On the TUSD Board, I was, I was just turning 30. And so I had, I felt like I had to do stuff. And when I started on the board, I was unmarried, I didn't have children. And people kept saying, well, why do you care about public education? You don't have kids. Public education should be something we all care about. And when I would listen to the board meetings, there was nobody there that was representing student voices. And that was my big thing in Teen Court, like we just empower young people really and let them know that they had a voice. So after that, I ran for office, I had a lot of people saying, well, yeah, you're Adelita Grijalva's daughter, but what else? So there's, there's a, it's a big steep, the bar is set really high. My dad has set the bar, in my opinion, very high. And then when, you know, there's a lot of people that, you know, if you're not a big fan of my dad, you're probably not a fan of mine, regardless of what I do, which I'm okay with. You just, at some point, you have to understand that not everyone is going to like you. And if everyone does, you're probably not doing anything.
Thick skin, right? In the position that you're in, you have to have that thick skin because just as much as followers that you have, you have the opposing.
Haters, they're detractors, they have a lot of them, yes. Yeah, and they also really like to be very vocal, so you know, I have been shamed for my accent. I've been shamed for, yeah, I know, do you hear one? I don't hear one, but people hear one apparently. I can't really understand her because of her accent. I'm like, well, you should get yourself a translator then.
Or get yourself a second language, you know, shoot.
Right, yeah.
You can speak two languages and they're making fun of your accent?
More than that, yeah.
Do you remember one particular time where, where you started to break in that thick skin? That you, you thought, I'm going to be in limbo, should I continue or should I just move in a different direction?
You know, once, once I was elected to office, I thought that it was really interesting for me because we got into office and then we had, our superintendent was leaving and there was a big, it was like a lot of chaos and it was, I hadn't even finished a year. But is this, is what it, is this what it is? And it's a volunteer position, you know, it's completely unpaid. So everyone that's running for school board, people that serve on Pima Community College, it's a volunteer position. So when people come up to the call to the audience and say, you know, we demand that you give back your salary, like, okay, nothing and nothing, here you go, yeah.
Wait a minute, you put up with all that turmoil, all that garbage, and you didn't even get paid for it?
No, no mileage, no nada. We got sandwiches, we got meals periodically, but.
But I think it comes down to the passion that you had to instill in making a change.
Somebody needed to represent.
Yes, yeah, and I'm really glad too, I mean, when I first had my first daughter, I was looking for preschool programs in TUSD, we didn't have any, like there weren't any unless you were income eligible. So you had to have below a certain poverty line in order to be eligible. There weren't any that I, as you know, a working mom and my husband was working. We both had okay jobs, but nothing, I can't, we couldn't afford 850 a month. So I pushed really hard to make preschool. Now preschool is in almost every elementary school in Tucson Unified. And one of the best moments was when I got to vote on the Board of Supervisors to dedicate $10 million to preschool. I was like, this is a full circle moment.
Congratulations, yeah.
I bet you all those haters appreciated what you did for them, because I mean, childcare is hard for everybody.
It is.
Let's go back to high school.
Yeah.
What kind of kid were you?
Um, I was a pretty good kid. I mean, I don't think I gave my parents a ton of grief. I was, I was in top 25, I mean, I think I had like a 3.0 dipped periodically with a C, Mr. Hess. I love him, he's my favorite teacher, but I failed chemistry, had to take it again. But he's one of my, still one of my favorite teachers. But I think it was, it was really important to me and the foundation that I got at Pueblo was that, you know, you have to work hard for what you want. And when I, when they were listing off the top 25 and I thought, I could have done that, you know? That's what I try to tell my kids, graduation is when you realize, did you work as hard as you could? And it's, and it really, it doesn't have to do so much with just straight up intelligence. It's like, how hard are you willing to work? And that's sort of where I think I learned from my dad and my mom and my nan, aunt, tata, my grandpa, that it's the, it's the work ethic that you put into it, you have to continue to work all the time. And so as a result of that, you know, being on the Board of Supervisors, after every meeting, I do essentially a little podcast, a little video, and this is what happened during the meeting. So that no one can ever go back and say, well, we haven't heard from you. Well, you haven't been really paying attention if you're not, like you, I tell you every meeting what, what's going on. I give you a summary of my votes or go out into the community a lot. And so I just, I make the fun stuff.
One thing that caught my eye is this, that you wanted to start a diversion program. If you saw that two girls were going to fight and it could have been prevented, right? What, two questions in this one. What was the, the one situation where you, you know, interfering changed the perception of the person involved? Right, that made a whole difference, that that person probably said, wow, if it wouldn't have been for Adelita, I wouldn't see things this way. That's one. Two, I think it's extremely important because when I used to work at pre-trial services in Superior Court, I would get all these young, young 18-year-olds, 16-year-olds getting arrested, going through the adult system, right? And couldn't do anything with the 16-year-olds because they're, they were minors, but the adults, right? I would see what they would come in for. I'd have a chat when I was doing the fingerprints. I would ask them what they wanted to do and got a little bit more involved in diverting so that they wouldn't come back through the system. And I give them the opportunity, sign off, have them go to court. I don't want to see you here, do you need a job? Yes, I'd get their name and their number, somebody's hiring, call them. So my recidivism rate of them coming back into the system was less than 50%, which is pretty good. So it kind of reminds me of what you wanted to do. So what situation or do you remember that you made a difference in somebody's life, right? That went another way?
You know, I think it's interesting because I, I never, it's never just you. It's like a system that you're trying to create, like a family.
Like a village.
Yes, and for a lot of these young people that we've worked with and families, they don't have like a net to catch them. We have it, I have it, I've been very lucky to have it. And so I've run into a lot of people who say, I went to Teen Court when I was 14 and I never got arrested again. I'm like, oh, it's too much. Or when I was giving out diplomas, which by the way, when you say, you know, you didn't get paid, to sit, being able to sit on a platform and watch all these graduates go across.
That was the biggest reward ever.
Oh my gosh, it is the best.
So you have, you have, clearly you have that, that passion.
Yeah, I love it. And that where I'd look and go, that was one of my kids, like he went to Teen Court and now he's getting his diploma. Those are the, those moments that are like amazing.
I ran into you at an event at the old Pueblo where they were doing the study at, from the University of Arizona, right? Where your dad got to speak, you got to speak, Mayor Rehina was speaking to as well. And first time I had seen you in a long time, it reminisced to Rocky Point when we had our little group, right? And we had so much fun for, so much fun in those years, but the first thing we talked about was Jose. How's Jose? And the first thing that came out of your mouth was, I got his son a scholarship. So when you said that to help another young student, your face just lit up.
Oh no, it's amazing, it's really great. And I think that the only way our society is going to continue and improve is when we have young people that have opportunities, when you have people that their job doesn't exist anymore, give them an opportunity to do something different. Otherwise, what we're going to have is we're going to have a lot of disenfranchised people who are frustrated. And that's not helpful. I mean, I remember seeing your, both your kids walk across the stage to get their diploma. I vividly remember it and I'm, so I'm taking pictures for parents that I know don't have the angle I do. I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm so excited for you. It just makes me so happy and that I think is great. Going to like kindergarten promotions, oh my gosh, those are amazing opportunities. And so for you to have like a little piece of it is great. I just got Facebook, you know, I try to keep in touch with all of our volunteers. And one of them just finished her first year at Stanford and at the law school. And you're like, oh my gosh, those are.
Because you see them grow, their struggles that they go through.
And what the benefit is.
What would you tell these younger generations, right? That want to make the money and want to be up here, but they don't want to work. There's a disconnect or of them given everything by their parents, right? But we're missing, we're missing that communication, obviously from back then to now. Now we have cell phones, we have the technology, there's a lot more involved. But what would you say to these kids?
Well, it's, I think I would say the same that I say to mine. You know, my son says, I just don't want to die behind a desk. Like I don't want like a cubicle death, you know? He's like, I just don't want to work in a cubicle, that's like his whole thing. And I said, but you have to understand that he wants to be an actor. So much of it is behind the scenes work that you need to understand. So you have to put the work in to understand. You can't just sit in front of the camera and expect everything's going to come to you. And I think there's this perception, because they see it on social media, that, you know, well, this person now is making, is an influencer and is now making millions of dollars because, you know, they just talk a lot in a camera. Well, yeah, but that's, that's the exception, it's not the rule. And the rule really is, how hard are you willing to work for what you want? And if you put the work in, I think a lot is possible, but you have to, you have to do the work. And, and also understand that the people that are most successful, they might not be as smart as you, but they're much harder workers than you are and you're going to hustle.
Hustlers behind the scenes.
Yep, you're going to get it.
Just, just like comedians, I have a lot of friend of mine, friends of mine in LA right now trying to make it actors. That's the hardest thing in the world to do because, and tell you, please relay this to your son, is that he's got to understand that you have to, you have to be willing to starve until you're making, a lot of these guys, while their movies are being played or even musicians, while their, their record is going number one, they're still washing dishes at a Denny's or someplace like that. I remember doing a comedy TV show in LA and a buddy of mine, Joey Medina, who was my mentor here, he was, he started off here doing comedy. He let me stay at his house and there were like eight comics staying in a two-bedroom house. And I said, Joey, how many, he says, you just crash out on the floor, man, you sleep where you can. I said, but there's eight people living in the house? He says, well, a lot of us are on, on the road, different times. So there's, but there's always at least four comics, three or four comics staying there. So you know, you just look for prime real estate, by the bathroom is probably the best place you could be. And so I did the show, I spent the night there and I flew back to Tucson next day. But that's what they were doing and these guys were always working, it's not like they were loafing. I remember Joey get up and, and he'd, he'd run in the morning and he'd come back and he would be writing, just writing and writing. And I said, you're, you're writing, you're writing for? And he says, yeah, man, I'm writing everything, I'm writing jokes, I'm writing for a possible TV show, maybe a movie script down the, I mean, I'm working, this is what they do.
Right.
And they, they deliver pizzas and they work at a taco place and they do whatever it takes to help pay rent and do that.
Yep, to get there.
I just wish for my kids and for everyone, I guess, that you have a job that doesn't feel like a job. Like that you have a job.
You have a passion to wake up.
Yes, and it's so exciting. And for some people, it's very different. But you know, we have a lot of vacancies, a lot of jobs, a lot of people that are near retirement age. And the jobs that people don't want right now are a lot of the vocational jobs, like plumbing and electrician.
That we've been talking about, right, that, that are needed. I used to get up in the morning and I used to rap to my kids and I used to be like, ready for this rap? They're all like, what? When I woke up this morning and got out of bed, I had a really fresh start going through my head, it was school. Get your booty up, right? So I used all these analogies, all these songs for, for them to learn. And I told my kids and other kids, because I worked for Pima College, the talent search program. And I would tell them, listen, you know, school's not for everybody.
Right.
Ideally, right? But get your vocational, if you love computers, go get your two-year certificate, your associate, start your business. You're doing what you love. So when you wake up in the morning, it's just phenomenal to get out and help people and do what you do.
Yep, yeah, it's fun.
Okay, let's talk about the negative of your political, and I've always wanted to ask this. Intimidation, death threats, that ever happened?
Yes.
Is there, can you tell, without of course going into detail, can you tell us, I mean, does it happen often?
Yes, yes, it happened Tuesday. Yes, yeah, so I'll give you an example. I was on the TUSD Board and it was the Mexican-American Studies issue. So our boardroom was always packed. And I remember sitting there and I could see this like red flash. And I was like, where's that little flash coming from? And it was somebody that had one of those pins that have the red end. Yeah, and so they were putting it like, you could see the razor spot, like the light on my head and one on my heart and I'm like, what is happening? And then we find out that that same individual brought a gun that they had to take, they had to send them back. So that was one of the catalysts for starting to have metal detectors at our TUSD meetings because.
What was going through your head?
I know, I, I guess, yeah, the light was, I mean, I was just, it's a little scary.
But yeah, you know, is this, is it, is it a real threat? Is it not a real threat, what's going to happen?
Well, that's what intimidation is all about, is that you never know, you never know.
You never know. There was a gentleman that came to our board meeting and started talking about how, you know, he's gonna, it's the right of the people. And so if you're hunted down, you know, but it's the right, like then it's going to be okay, they'll be forgiven. And I'm, it's not a veiled threat, it's, it's fairly common. And then the same individual, I find out on a regular basis, used to come to the board meetings with a gun that they would have to check. So you know, you think about those things.
Did you know this person?
No, I'd never met them before. No, I, I met them, you know, once I was elected. And you have people that, that's, I mean, this is their full-time job. They come to the meeting, they sit through the entire meeting, they threaten everyone else around them. And what I've been trying to do is create an environment that is safe and that people feel comfortable to come and speak to the call to the audience. And when you have, you know, three hours of people that just, I mean, it's just really ugly. You have to have a thick skin because a lot of times I have to sit there thinking, do I care what you think about me? No, I don't. I, I respect that you have the right to come speak, but when you call me out for my weight or call me out for my face or demand that I sit down and shut up during public meetings.
Are you mentally talking to yourself while you are, you know, working in session? And people are throwing out all these insults and threats, preparing yourself, don't listen?
Well, no, I just have to say like, you know, don't have a reaction, because that's kind of, they want you to have a reaction, right? But the other thing for me is I have to change this environment so people like me will want to run for office. I mean, when you look at these meetings, people look at me and say, why would you ever do that? Like, why would I ever want, I, I want to do good, I, I wouldn't mind running for office, but why would I put myself in that situation? That's the culture that we have to change.
Well, that's the culture, but also you have an immediate leverage. Where do you see yourself next? We were talking outside of the studio a little while ago and I asked you, Adelita, what is your passion? What is your passion and what you're doing? What do you see? First thing you said was, I love people.
Yeah.
Governor.
I wanna make Tucson beautiful.
I do. I wanna make this a beautiful place for everyone to live. And so however, I mean, I have meetings with the mayor twice a week. We're also comadres, so we gossip a lot of other about of other stuff. Um but I think that it's important that, you know, you have people that you can turn to. That you respect to say, give me some constructive feedback. How am I doing? How am I? And I surround myself with people like that. You have a lot of people that get into certain offices and they surround themselves with people that are just gonna say. You're doing a great job. I don't need that.
Which is a positive note. We've been talking about empowering people, right? And we talked about in another session that hang out with the people. The positive people that are gonna get you faster to your goal.
Now, and does your dad ever say, Mihita, this is what you should do?
What I think is really funny is people always say, well, her daddy, you know, those those are the little jabs, right? And they call to the artist, well, her daddy is doing da 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 da. He has a full time job and then some, and so do I. So the oh, he did it one time where he um. I walked into a room and someone went up to me and said, my dad, your dad told me to look out for you, Mihita. And I was like, oof. Each other like that. Yeah, I'm not Mihita. You could, I'm good with Adelita, but Mihita, we don't know each other. And then I called him up and he was like, that was the last time. So people will call him and say, you need to tell your daughter. He goes, nope, I'm not telling her anything. So we really don't like sit around and talk about stuff. He is involved and knows what's going on politically. And what's going on in every city, every community that he represents. He reads all the time. He goes through huge books, like just for fun, at least one every two days, and he reads every newspaper. From every community that he represents. So he's very knowledgeable and knows what's going on. So periodically he'll be like, he'll just call me up and say. Okay, just take a deep breath, alright? Okay, you'll have a good meeting. Take a deep breath. Okay, thanks, Dad. Love you too. Yeah, so he doesn't tell me anything, but it's nice to know that I have someone that I can like, oh my gosh.
So Dave kept saying, governor, governor, you know, how many terms can the governor serve?
Well, the governor can serve, serve, I mean, that, there's not a limit there.
How about the mayor?
The legislature, the mayor also doesn't have that kind of limit. Um there's certain, like the legislature, you'd get termed out. And that's why you see people that go from the House to the Senate and then come back locally, so in Arizona.
So let's, so so let's real talk here, right? I've seen how you've grown. And see where you're at and see that you're a go getter and have a passion and love to make Tucson beautiful and help people. And there's a lot of controversy out there. Certainly, there must be something that you wanna do next.
Hold that thought. We're gonna be right back. I wanna hear this answer and I wanna make sure viewers come back to hear this answer. So we'll be back after this short pause. Do you have a football player that's afraid of getting hit? How about a baseball player that's in a slump? Or how about just wanting to tweak your golf game just a little bit more? At Hypnosis Works LLC, we've been helping athletes overcome obstacles and tweak their focus for the last eight years. Call us now for your free consultation, five two zero four six five seven four five seven. Welcome once again back to Empowering People where our guest Adelita Grijalva is schooling us on what it's like to be a local politician. Martha, we froze at your question. Ask ask that one more time.
We did. We were talking earlier about how you wanna beautify Tucson, how you have passion to help people. I've seen you grow, you know, from TUSD to your position now. Um certainly, maybe another twenty years or not. But, you know, you see your children, you know, this is your your children's Tucson. What position have you thought about, you know? Considering, I know we've talked about governor, governor, you know, we need more Latinas in these positions. What position would you entertain in the future that can help, you know, puzzle what you've done already?
I I think that what we need to appreciate though is that the political climate right now is really difficult. And especially if you're a person of color, um it becomes much more targeted about who you are personally. Than what your political ideology is or what your belief is. And what I see um at the state level is while I'm very happy that we had some wins. Um we had, you know, a governor that is Democrat that has a group of people around her that are really, they're more moderate. Not super progressive. I think that we can make some inroads. I was really happy to see Adrian Fontes, who is a Latino. Um be able to reach a statewide position. But for me, in my experience, it's been very difficult. Because you do have, even in our, in our beautiful community of Tucson and Pima County, we have some pockets that are incredibly racist. Um and really difficult to get an inroad in.
So you're talking about, you're talking about this, but you talked about how you wanted to help when you were younger and you continue wanting to put your.
And I do.
Two two Tucson. So you have that hungerness to wanna make changes. We talked about thick skin.
I have a lot of it.
What would prevent you?
I have, well, it's also like, is it winnable? And I'm not saying that it's, nothing is out of the question for me. But I served twenty years in TUSD with everyone telling me how it was a stepping stone. I was like, I spent twenty years. That was a really long stone. Longest step ever. And so I'm really happy, really happy with what we're able to do now. Um in this office right now. We have a lot of things that we're working on that I'm really excited about. Um as a, you know, kind of a freshman on the Board of Supervisors, we were able to get a majority to support. Five million dollars into affordable housing and solutions, which is something that the county hasn't done before. We also put two million dollars into acquiring open space to protect our like environment. And so there's things that we're doing, the ten million to preschool, those are things that I hear all the time, that that's not the job of the county. And I think it really has to do with the fact that I was able to be a part of a big school district. And understand that the problems that are in our community for a urban district like TUSD affect all of us and we have to fix them. And so now I get to have a voice in kind of vocational education and what things are we offering, what kind of return to work training? All of that is under Pima County. So there's just like a lot of potential, I feel like. Yeah, so I think that I'm I'm not gonna close the door to anything, but right now I'm really happy. I have kids that are still in school. I know that um, you know, for my age, people are like, you still have kids in school? Yes, I do. I have a. My daughter is gonna be a junior at Pueblo, which I'm very proud of. And she's in Mariachi Aslan. She's a volunteer, or she's a violin teacher right now at the Davis Camp. So I'm super proud, like her first job and she's, she loves it. Um my son really is very interested in acting and so he's gonna be a freshman at Tucson High. So we'll have a warrior and a badger under the same roof. And then my youngest, it's gonna be interesting. And they start school at the same time, so good luck to the Uber driver over here. And then my um, my son Joaquin is going into seventh grade. At Wakefield. And so we're all, they're little, you know.
So you did say your passion were your children and your husband.
My children, my husband, and it's not just so much, it's like if if it opens an opportunity for my kids and kids in our neighborhood. Then it opens up opportunities for everyone. So when people say stuff like, well, you're a Latina and you only care about Latinos. No, but if I'm focusing on people that don't have opportunities and we can lift them up, everyone else comes up too. It's not like we bypass anybody.
Got it. How, one word, how would your friends describe you in in your friend setting? And how would you be described, one word, in your work setting?
Oh, I think it's probably the same for both. I'm um, I, me gusta platicar. So I'm a big chatter. And so they're like, oh, here comes Adelita, we're gonna be talking forever. I do like it and I think it's super fun. I like meeting people. Um and and my friends get really annoyed because it'll, I'll be, we'll be sitting at a restaurant or something. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I went to school with that. Or like, I I gave that kid a diploma, I'm gonna go say hi. So I get up and leave, they get super annoyed. Yeah, cuz it's like, we're just hanging out. Yeah, I think it's really fun.
Now, here's a, here's a question for your husband and I hope he's watching this. Was he ever uh uh back when you, you were dating? Was there any form of, was he intimidated by his dating Roj Grijalva's daughter?
No, I don't think so. I think he liked, cuz I, he liked me the way I looked and then realized who I was. Yay, me. So um, so he also worked um for Supervisor Elias. So we were actually campaigning all together. So that campaign where my dad was running for Congress, I was running for school board. Richard Elias was running for um for the Board of Supervisors. That election, we lived there. I mean, it was everyday grind and there's a lot of couples that came from that. There were like three people that got married, like three couples that got married as a result of that campaign. So it was a love. And my dad was frustrated because we were trying to keep it a secret and he's like, this is not the love connection, you're campaigning. I was like, yeah, I know, we're working really hard, yeah.
Another question, um you had mentioned earlier the racist pockets that we have. Any of those racial comments ever get directed to you at at a, really?
Yeah, actually, just two week, a month ago, um I heard wetback for the first time since, I don't know. And those the are the kinds of things that you hear and and I feel like our previous administration nationally gave people carte blanche. To be able to just, what those things that sort of sit in the back of your head that you never would say, people say. And it to me, it and there is a, there is a frustration and anger in some people that can be very scary. And so I understand why people don't want to kind of get into this arena, but I feel like we have to have more people that are. Willing to compromise, are sane, don't, it's not a power grab. It's like, you're doing this because you're doing good things. I took a pay cut to take, to take the selected position. People are like, oh, now you're getting paid to do what you like. I'm like, yeah, but I got a pay cut cuz I was the other job I was working for twenty, you know, I was at at um Pima Prevention Partnership running teen court. For twenty-five years. So, you know, little raises here and there. Um I was, I, we were very comfortable. And so it's interesting because it's like, you know, when you talk about the kinds of, when the item comes up for raises for city council and mayor. That's always voted down. But then that means that you always have somebody working that always has to have another job. Unless they're retired or independently wealthy. And is that the kind of representation of the person that would represent your interests best?
Almost like a part time doctor. Do you want a part time doctor to perform on your surgery? Or do you want a full time?
Right, and do you want someone that's dedicated? I mean, the staff make more than all of the elected officials.
The the office managers, the secretaries and everybody there, wow.
Well, all of and all of the staff that work um in the in the Board of Supervisors, most of the staff members make more money than the elected officials.
So what what I'm hearing you say is that folks that are that are serving in these positions, these elected positions, whether they're a school board or for the city. They're doing it uh for the the basis of of the community, for the for the good of the community. And it's from their heart. I mean, I can't imagine.
Our mayor has another job. Our mayor, cuz she cannot, they, there's no way to sustain. I mean, every member of every uh city council member has another job. They all have to. Because you can't survive on twenty-four thousand a year, whatever they're made.
I can't imagine like if all of y'all just got fed up and said, I'm not doing this anymore. Who would take your position? Who would want those positions? I mean, that's, that's, that's not only thick skin, that's.
This takes us to another thing. So if you weren't doing what you do now, what what was your backup like? Oh, my gosh, this is what.
I was really happy with teen court. I was, that was, I mean, it was a wonderful job that I was able to work with so many amazing young people. And I would have stayed there probably. Um I did wanna be an attorney for a little bit. My nana thought I would be a very good litigator. Which I tend to agree with her. And um those, those would be, and but I really, when I started at the U of A, I wanna be a veterinarian. And then the science, the math and sciences were like walking into the wall. I'm like, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that I have the skill set for that piece of it. But yeah, I wanted to be, I'm an animal lover, so I wanted to do that.
Joe Biden comes to town and they say, Adelita, we want you to take him out to lunch. Where are you gonna take him?
I'm gonna take him um to Haritos, to get a burrito, cuz it's delicious. Their red chili and bean is the bomb. Um but I also love Minidito, so it depends on when, cuz you know, Haritos closes early. So if it's in the evening, then I'll take him to Minidito. Caruso's, ugh, the best, the best pizza ever. Yeah, but I can talk about food all day.
Are there, are there any um or were there any obstacles that you've had to overcome? In sometime in your life, whether it's uh living in the barrio or uh going to Pueblo or 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 even with the politics. Uh the the campaigning, that that had to be tough.
The campaigning is rough, um and it was difficult. And I think the hardest one was during COVID. Where, you know, Richard Elias, um was my friend, passed away suddenly and we had ten days to get on a ballot. And dealing with like the loss and like you're just seriously in shock. And his wife called me up and said, you have to do it. Somebody has to do it cuz someone will. And we don't wanna lose this seat. And it was because she said, you gotta do it. That we tried to figure it out. And how do you do that? It's a paper driven, door knocking, talking to people in the middle of a pandemic. So we had to like figure out how to run a campaign in a pandemic. That was crazy. It was crazy. And um it was, I think, you know, we opened up a headquarters and everyone was social distance and we had masks on all over the place. And like the plastic visors and people were coming in and we had a picture of Richard up there and it was like. It was like a a mortuary. It felt so sad. People were coming in crying cuz we hadn't had an opportunity and I. Like, my mom is famous for her hugs. I hug everybody too. And it was the most painful thing to not be able to reach out and hug somebody and just kind of give them condolences. So that's, people were coming like, I didn't wanna leave my house, I'm scared to leave, but I had to do something. I'm like, it's just, it was horrible. So that was the toughest. Um the other stuff, trying to balance like my family and uh and campaigning and work stuff, that's difficult. TUSD was hard because I had a full time job and then evenings. So those were always a little rough, but that those were the hard things. Um I think that the personal attacks, I sort of, I sort of just gotta, gotta a thick skin about it and don't really, it doesn't affect me as much anymore.
What would you tell your kids if if they ever heard from somebody, just being a jerk. At school, uh what would you tell them when they, when they wanted to haul off and just slug somebody?
My son said, Mom, I don't care if people tell me anything, but when they talk about you and Tata, it really makes me mad. And he's like six one and two hundred and some pounds. So I'm like, you just gotta take a deep breath, baby, cuz don't get mad. Um but that's really, that's kind of where I am too. Like, I don't mind if you talk about me. If you talk about my family and you talk about my kids, my dad, I I do. Start to twitch and that, those are things that I can't.
Did you know I went to Wakefield? What would you want people to know about you that they don't know?
That I'm a normal person, that I don't have, we don't have uh maids clean the house. I go grocery shop. I, it's amazing to me. I was at Savers the other day and this woman was like, aren't you like famous on TV? I was like, I don't know about famous, but sometimes I'm on TV. What are you doing here? I'm like, I have three kids. They're expensive. So I'm gonna do, I'm gonna resale whatever I can. Um you know, or like, when I go to the grocery store, you go shopping? Yeah, it's kinda like, I feel like it's sort of like my kids seen their teacher. Yeah, they're like, you eat? And like, it's so funny, even.
Worse in the bathroom.
Right? You're like, let's not chat in the party. Um but I think it's funny when people are like, you just are really normal. Well, yeah. I mean, when you see me on a dais, I'm, usually you have to have a little bit of a Teflon. So I saw somebody the other day, I was pumping gas, they're like, hey, I've seen you on TV. You look prettier in person. Aw, thank you. Cuz that means that I'm like trying really hard not to have a facial expression. Whenever the camera panned to me cuz someone was saying something that was not so kind.
Yes, this was awesome. Thank you so much, Adelita, for for sharing your passion, what you wanna do in the future, how you wanna beautify. Um people, but most importantly, the message that I'm reading is that you're a people person. And that you wanna help out in any which way, in any different facet of Tucson.
I do, yep. Thank you so much.
Coming on. And again, folks, if you got questions, find Martha or myself on Facebook. Uh send us your questions. Send us, if you have people that you'd wanna see at our, on our podcast, who who would has, have a story to tell. Please let us know. Uh if you have questions or concern or have a problem you wanna work out, we can help you do that as well. This is Dave Mbrila from Hypnosis Works and Real TMD as well as.
Martha Dabdo, where you're a pulse away from purchasing your home.
And Adelita Grijalva saying goodbye to. See you next time.
Thank you.